Good evening. We're going to get started here. Well, it may not look like we have a quorum. We do because we have a couple of members online. So I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Welcome. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
I second. All in favor? Six zero. All right, well, we have a bunch of student and staff recognitions this evening, and I'm very excited about that. It's one of our, I think, our favorite times and meetings is when we have an opportunity to see so many young faces in the crowd and give kudos to where they're due for all of the hard work that our students and teachers have done. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Jones to start with our first item, which is the Schools of Distinction. Dr. Jones?
Well, I'm delighted tonight to recognize seven of our schools as Schools of Distinction. And, you know, it really shows that a lot of the work that they're doing out in the buildings is really paying off. And so thank you to our entire staff. But to these seven buildings, I know this brought a great deal of pride to everybody in the building. So this honor is based on the results from last year's 2223 Next Generation Accountability System, and District and Schools Earn Points on 12 different indicators. And when I call your building, if you'll come forward, because we want to acknowledge you and have an opportunity to shake the chair's hand and let us congratulate you. So principals, and if you have assistant principals or anybody else here, bring them with you. That's fine. We'll start with Eastern Middle School. And Hamilton Avenue. So both of those schools were recognized for their students' high academic growth. So fantastic. Next, we'll recognize ISD. North Myanis. North Street. Parkway. And Riverside. And all of those buildings were recognized for high performance and high academic growth. So congratulations to all of you and for the hard work, and we're just so very, very proud. Come on down, Hamav. We just recognized you. We want to shake your hand. And again, Hamav was for high academic growth. And I might just add, I think I'm most pleased that it's really all about growth. You know, it's not just where we end up with a score. Every one of those buildings were recognized for growth, and that really is what our strategic plan in Greenwich is all about. So congratulations and thank you to all of you.
Next, we have Mr. Mayo. Come on down to introduce the National Merit semifinalists.
Good evening, Dr. Jones. Chairperson Kowalski, members of the Board of Education, haven't done this in a while. Members of the community, I'm here to introduce our National Merit semifinalist. And today, we received word that 19 of the 20 semifinalists are now finalists in this award. So I'm going to introduce my vice principal, Stana Talata, who's going to read the names. We're going to shake hands. We're going to ask all the finalists to stay up here for one big round of applause. So, Mr. Talata.
Great. Stella Boyd. Marcus Chung. Isaac DeCruz. Kate Friedman. Connor Hohn. John Junius. Jackson Kim. Audrey Lin. Andrew Lo. Maximilian Lu. Michael McLammy. Kyle Nadel. Amrutha Nandakumar. Aubrey Niederhofer. Ryose Tanakamuru. Shuya Vandishwart. Kenneth Wilber. Jacob Winston. Evelyn Wu. And Christina Zhang.
They're all classmates. We're all friends here.
Just one more round of applause for our finalists. Mr. Georgiou, come on up here.
Good evening, Superintendent Jones, Chairperson Kowalski, Board of Ed members, and everyone here in attendance and virtually. It's with my pleasure that I'm here with you today to announce and recognize our Fall All-State athletes, as well as two of our Fall Championship teams and one of our outstanding coaches. First, we'll start off with the All-Star teams, All-State, excuse me, for cross-country. We have Christian Zawazlak. Come on up, please. Girls cross-country, we have Esme Daplin. Kate Friedman. Lauren Resnick. These last three young ladies, not only are All-State, they're also All-Academic. Congratulations. We'd like to recognize our Cross-Country Team of the Year voted by the Coaches Association. And we're going to bring them all up, everyone all together, some up there already. Esme Daplin, who's up there, Kate Friedman, Lauren Resnick, Eliana Daplin. Orla Muir. Belle Nichols. And Ava Pasimana. For field hockey, we have Amelia Arroyo. Julia Latuada. Stella Tebow. And Kelly Jensen, she's also All-Academic. For football, we have John Insigne. Sebastian Para. George Van Vulakis and Peter Van Vulakis. Boy soccer, Maximo Ferrario. Girl soccer, Emma Bazia. Swimming and diving, Alison Tourette. Julia Cosma. Kenzie Warden. Senna Boskert. Sophie Wang. Sydney G. Wesley Wales. Ava Varanos, who's also All-Academic. Peyton Foster, who's also All-Academic and Athlete of the Year. And this year's Team of the Year was Swimming and Diving. And for volleyball, Cassidy Bonney. Ladies and gentlemen, one more hand of applause for our All-State athletes. Congratulations. I would also like to recognize one of our coaches. This coach was awarded the Coach of the Year Award by the United States Track and Field and Cross-Country Coaches Association. One boys' and girls' coach from all 50 states, as well as the District of Columbia, were honored for their success during the fall of 2023 and were selected by a committee of experts from around the nation. This honor is based upon the leadership and success of the GHS program, cross-country, as well as their season. It reflects this gentleman's hard work and dedication to the sport, to his athletes, and to the community. I'd like to take the time to recognize Coach Evan Dubin as Coach of the Year. Coach Dubin will also recognize his championship team. The girls' team this year had won both FCACs, states, and opens. Coach Dubin, you want to do the honors?
Okay. Thank you all. I appreciate the time and recognition, allowing us to be here. The girls put in a lot of hard work, so to be recognized at this level is very much appreciated. Across country, the sport that most people aren't necessarily familiar with, you're not going to see it on TV, there's no youth feeder programs for it, it's something you don't do until you get to high school. But the way it works is sort of like golf, you want the lowest score. So when you're in a race, there'll be 200, 300 people at the state championship races. And as you cross the finish line, whatever place you finished in the race, that's the score you have for your team. So you want the lowest score. So as your five, first five finishers finish the race, add up the score of where they're at with everybody, and that's what your team score is. So you want to have the lowest. And fortunately, this year, we had a tremendous group of girls that happened to be really fast. In addition to being fast, they are just great people in terms of character in the classroom. You saw Kate Friedman as one, was already up here being recognized as a National Merit semifinalist. So it's success not only on the course, on the roads, but in the classroom as well. So super proud of them. Girls, we had in the order of our finishing of our team this year, Esme Daplin. Shouldn't they come up? Come on up. Come back up. Esme Daplin, Kate Friedman, Lauren Resnick, Eliana Daplin, Orla Muir, Belle Nichols, and Ava Pasimana. And we are fortunate to be FCAC Conference Champions, State Class Double L Champions, State Open Champions. So the way it's cross-country works, similar to swimming, track and field, other running sports, they separate the schools by how big they are, and that's your state class. So we're one of the largest, if not the largest, school in the state. So we're in Class Double L. But then they break it down and take regardless of the size of school, we have the true best of the best in a state open, and we were fortunate enough to win that quite handily. It was a rather dominant performance due to the hard effort and character of these young ladies up here.
The last team we'd like to recognize this year, and that was a great accomplishment, Coach Dubin and the girls' track and our cross-country, excuse me. We also had our girls' swimming and diving this year that were also FCAC Double L State Champs and Opens. I don't believe Brenda was able to come down. A lot of these swimmers swim year-round, but we still want to recognize them. So I will just read a couple of names just so you guys know who they are. We have Ava Bain. If you're here, come up. Julia Costello. Peyton Foster. Tess Ferno. Anna Bel Guanera. Ashley Hopper. Olivia Hopper. Sydney G. Helena Kennedy. Mackenzie Newey. Ellie Scharf. Ava Varanos. Senna Bo Kurtz. Garen Fint. Emma Steeman. Sophia Wang. Michelle Weisler. Olivia DeVito. Melissa Geiger. Isa Guzman. Kristen Jacks. Nora Meddelson. Lily Norton. Julia Pearson. Ainsley Starbeck. Wesley Wales. Ava Bernstein. Allison Charlotte. Eleanor Daytumir, excuse me for the mispronunciation. Lily Guanera. Julia Cosma. Izzy Nasa. Kate Wick. And Kenzie Warden. These are your state, FCAC, state and open champs. Do you have one here? Yes, come on up.
Go ahead.
Just a little fun fact, and I have the video to prove it, but we're not going to show it tonight. At the beginning of the season, Mr. Mayo went up to these young ladies and made a deal with them that if they won all three this year, he would take a dive in the GHS pool, and he took the dive with all his clothes on. So let's hear it from Mr. Mayo too as well. Thank you, guys.
For three championships, I'll go in any day. And I made them the same bet for next year. So, anyway, we have two more awards. One is the National Center for Women and Information Technology Award, Impact Award, which goes to Ashley Maligan. Ashley, are you here?
Thank you.
And we also have, from the U.S. Chess Federation, the 2023 co-champion, that's the United States co-champion, Maximilian Lu. Way to go, Max. Come on up.
I did appreciate the board members last April. The chess boards for the chess team won the state championship last year, and I think you're absent.
Yeah, yeah, of course. After we got those, we had a running chess game on my dining room table. Oh, really? Three straight months. Wow. Yeah, so thank you very much.
Wait, was it national chess? What's your ELO rate?
Like 24, 25 years.
We won't repeat that, Mr. Hill. Thanks, everyone.
Well, thank you, guys, for all coming. It's quite impressive. So now you guys can all go home and do your homework and get ready. Sure, there's tests and exams tomorrow. Oh, unless you want to wait to hear the student body give their little, their talks to the board. Yeah, student government. Yeah. All right, Caleb, Omar, you're up. And since I'm not sure which one of you goes first, you can pick.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Omar Galal, and I'm the Student Body Vice President at GHS. Tonight, I will be covering several updates from student government. Earlier this month, student government sent out a feedback form to the entire student body in an effort to assess students' concerns and perspective. Students provided helpful insights related to exam waiting, studying patterns, and advisor-based activities, and we look forward to using their feedback to inform future discussions to improve our school. Last November, the board approved our proposal to purchase barcode scanners at the Cardinal Cafeteria to expedite the process of purchasing lunch, which would in turn increase cafeteria sales and allow students more time to relax during their lunch breaks. Since then, we have continued to work towards the integration of barcode scanners by re-establishing routine meetings between student government and the Food Services Department. We have used these meetings to clearly outline the path towards barcode scanners, which notably includes upgrading the software and equipment that the cashiers use. Aside from barcode scanners, there have been growing concerns between food services and student government about GHS's involvement in the National School Lunch Program. The program's nutritional requirements have negatively impacted serving sizes, as well as students' interest in school lunch. We request that the BOE looks into this issue and ends our involvement in the National School Lunch Program as soon as possible to bring the usual lunch and snack offerings back to our Cardinal Cafe. Lastly, and perhaps most importantly, we remain concerned about how the approved 2024-2025 operating budget will reduce and strain teachers at Greenwich High School. We still believe that a revision should be made to prevent the teacher reduction at GHS. To speak more on this, I'd like to pass the mic to Student Body President Caleb Kalund, who will read a letter that was written and signed by all the leaders on our Executive Committee and has been emailed to each of the members of the BOE. Caleb and I plan to share this letter with the BET as well. Thank you for your time and consideration. And Caleb, please.
To the members of the Board of Education. On behalf of the student body at Greenwich High School, the Student Government Executive Committee wishes to inform you of the anguish that is brought with the school budget under consideration. The Executive Committee is the group of students that were elected into positions of leadership by our classmates, and our role in student government is to acquire the sentiment of the student body and relay it to the respective authority. We seek to fulfill this responsibility by expressing our utmost concern for next year's budget, which that removes six teachers from GHS. A multitude of reasons exist to why this proposed teacher reduction at Greenwich High School is much more harmful than it is helpful. An educator's job is to teach the next generations of students, to encourage them to chase their dreams and to guide in the system as they flourish in their academic endeavors. The removal of six teachers will inflate class sizes, strain teachers, and decrease individual engagement between students and staff. In a school community with over 3,000 students and staff, these negative consequences are felt tremendously. A general consensus exists among students at Greenwich High School that this budget proposal would harm the current learning environment and hinder the ability for success in the Greenwich Public School System's mission to educate all students to their highest level of academic potential and to teach them the skills and knowledge to become capable, creative, and responsible members of society. As the elected leaders of Greenwich High School, we respectfully request that the Board of Education reconsider the current budget to adequately reflect the will of the student body. Please do not reduce the number of teachers at Greenwich High School next year.
Thank you. Now we have GEA comments. Will?
Good evening, Chairman Kowalski, Board of Ed members. Excuse me. Our parents, Greenwich community, and my GEA members, some of them which are not very happy, and not very happy with me at times, too. I'm going to steal, John, your line, but I don't have your stuffed animal, so I'd like to address the elephant in the room. Most of us have seen and possibly read all the articles in the Greenwich Time, Connecticut Examiner, and the Centennial. These articles are distractors. These spin masters are misleading the public with false narrative about what's really happening in our schools and about our teachers. They are sharing misleading information about teachers, absenteeism, which is not a problem here in Greenwich. It's on an average with the national standards of numbers, which I'll share. But in the second article, it was corrected by the Greenwich Time with accurate data analysis provided by Dr. Bud. And I sat in that second meeting and heard it firsthand, and it was in the paper. One point of the data analysis noted that the first 100 days, the average number of sick days was four. The average number of personal days were .75, because you can't take a half-personal day. According to the December 2023 Education Week report, teachers maintain similar levels of attendance as observationally similar workers, despite receiving lower wages and being exposed to stressful working conditions. These continued attacks against teachers and lack of respect must stop. It is very hurtful, and my teachers are very upset about this. And if it's not good for teachers, it's not good for our students. Our dedicated educators are showing up, working harder than ever to meet the needs of their students and give them the education that they deserve. These conditions and what's going on are unsustainable. Our students, families, and staff deserve more, and Greenwich has more to give. We truly need to fund our budget. These continued cuts, in order to keep the mill rate as flat as possible, are not only decimating our schools, but negatively impacting our entire community. The hallmark of Greenwich education has always been striving for excellence. It's what our students deserve and what our parents expect to come. Our educators are dedicated and go above and beyond every day to serve the needs of every student. Greenwich children deserve nothing less. In closing, I have to say that if I'm going to stand up here and speak about my teachers being hurt, then I have to own it and speak about one of the words used in the article. As our Board of Ed members are volunteers and do not get paid, so are our BET members, and they work many hard hours. so are our BET members, and they work many hard hours. Uh, and they are, some of them are very, very strong educational advocates. And uh and I that should not have been used in a general term. Um, that could be very hurtful to them. And I am openly apologizing that. Um, you know, I have friends on on the BET and um uh, I should have caught that, so um I want to apologize to them uh if and I own it, and I have to be uh true to my word. If I'm gonna stand up and speak, I can't do the same thing. So, thank you.
Thanks, Will. PTA Council.
So glad we turned the podium around. I was afraid I was not gonna be looking at you. Um Chair Kowalski, BOE members, Superintendent Jones, uh everyone here, everyone listening. Uh, I'm John Fisher. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm the Greenwich PTA Council President, the parent of two of the 8,611 great kids in the Greenwich Public Schools. I'd like to start by expressing congratulations to the Schools of Distinction and to all the great GPS students who received recognitions earlier. Uh, and in the to and fro of the budget discussions, we hear some people ask, what do we get for our money? Uh, the schools and the students recognized tonight are just the tip of the iceberg of the answer. Student achievement, priceless. Next up, the BET budget process is clattering along like a creepy automaton. Um, I did bring a creepy automaton, but um the the barrier here would make it so you would not be able to enjoy it, so I I left it in my seat. Uh, the community continues to closely watch the budget process. We note that in today's BET Budget Committee Consolidation Day uh meeting, there was not a lot of detailed discussion about the BOE operating budget. Uh, there was some back and forth on the BOE budget coming in above guidance, but it was also noted in the meeting that the BOE budget is very, very close to the BET guidance when comparing the BOE budget to current year actuals plus the interim appropriations. PTA Council urges the BOE and all the BOE members to proactively and aggressively engage with the BET to help guide and shape that discussion. Apparently, at least one BET member believes there's some open questions on revenue, for example, the tuition and the facility rental fees, and we urge the administration to ensure that all the open questions are answered. We urge the BOE to continue to maintain focus on the importance of all our student-facing programs, as our GHS student leaders highlighted, uh, and on the importance of maintaining the Greenwich Public Schools and as an employer of choice for our great educational professionals. PTA Council was dismayed to hear teacher absenteeism being brought up as a contentious topic in the budget discussions. Even more dismayed to hear innuendos of gold-bricking. The district has incredibly talented educational professionals. That's professionals with a capital P, and that rhymes with T, and that stands for teachers. These are people who almost universally have advanced degrees and multiple professional certifications, every bit as professionally qualified as any lawyer, doctor, or hedge funder in town. These are people who went into the profession not to make buckets of money, because they don't, but because they are dedicated and motivated to teach. It borders on insane to suggest that they're gaming the system and costing the town money to get a few extra days off. The New York Times ran an article last weekend highlighting that teacher absenteeism and the shortage of substitutes is a national problem affecting school districts from New York to Chicago to Massachusetts to Columbus, Ohio, to Washington State, and more. As the BOE knows, GPS pays substitutes $110 per day. We hear that Stanford pays 140. Stonington pays 240. Even Branford pays more at 115. The New York Times reports that the Sacramento School District boosted substitute pay to $355 a day to address their substitute shortage, while some schools have had to close because of a lack of substitutes. It seems about 1% of the school operating budget for Greenwich is for the cost of substitute teachers, and about half of that is the year-on-year increase. We urge the BOE to proactively and aggressively work to shut down these insane tangential suggestions that teacher absenteeism represents an unreasonable cost to the town. It's a national issue. We can solve it locally only by supporting teachers' needs in and out of the classroom and making GPS an employer of choice, not by cutting the operating budget. Thank you for this time, and thank you for your service to the community.
Thanks, John. I appreciate it. Um, now we have our community comments for this evening. Uh, we have four on the list, so. First up is Kate Bernard, and the next one up is Mary Beth Smith.
Good evening, Chairperson Kowalski, Board members, and Dr. Jones. When I was hired by Greenwich in 2018, I was certain that this is where I would work until retirement. Unfortunately, there have been so many changes in special education leadership that have led to an environment that threatens the sapme of my passion for teaching. This is not how I want my career, which has been largely satisfying to end, and rewarding, I might add. Therefore, I have resigned, but I don't want my resignation to be for naught. Sadly, it feels as if those making decisions do so in a vacuum without consideration for the most important stakeholders, the students. In addition to the changes to the role of the special educator, decisions regarding personnel have so directly impacted students that parents are now hiring lawyers. I find myself in the middle of a case right now, despite having done all that I could do to mitigate the impact of the students' lack of access to services. These illegally, the IEPs illegally are legal documents, and yet students are not getting their services. Over the past few years, I volunteered my time on special education committees, in addition to other committees, tried to effectively communicate issues and to even offer solutions, only to have them fall on deaf ears. Initially, it felt like those making decisions were open to input, but slowly it began to dawn on me that they only wanted to hear what they wanted to hear, and incrementally, communication dwindled to nothing. Last summer, I read an article in the Greenwich Time about how stretched-thin special ed teachers feel, and I found it quite disheartening, as I felt our concerns were minimized to the need for bathroom breaks. As a teacher, I take great pride in my work and have always gone above and beyond. However, at a certain point, the increasing expectations have led to roles and responsibilities becoming blurred. Consequently, it has become quite clear that the job of a special education teacher at Greenwich High School is untenable. We don't need more training. We don't need more time to do our jobs. We, I'm sorry, we need more time to do our jobs. We need clear-cut roles and responsibilities, and if we are to co-teach lower caseloads, as were recommended by the PCG report, I have quite a high caseload. We need our input listened to and respected, and we need evidence that our input is considered, as we are the ones on the ground doing what needs to be done day in and day out. I thank you for your time.
Thirty seconds. Oh, thank you. Mary Beth Smith, and up next is Courtney Powers.
Good evening, Chairman Kowalski, Board of Ed members, and Superintendent Jones. My name is Mary Beth Smith, and I have been a high school teacher for 40 years, 32 of those at Greenwich High School. I love my job. I consider myself beyond fortunate to have worked as a teacher all of these years alongside some of the best and brightest educators in the country. In addition to teaching, I serve as an instructional coach for my department and as a program associate. This gives me a unique perspective on the proposed budget cuts for the 2024-2025 school year. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my colleagues and to advocate for my students. Before I begin, I must preface my words with my own strongly-held belief. The most important people in this district are the students. Everything we do must be in order to serve their needs, allow them to thrive, and realize their potential. The teachers and paraprofessionals are the second most important people in this district. They are on the front line every day, nurturing, encouraging, and educating these students. Everyone else must ensure that we, the teachers, are supported in the most important job in the world, educating our future leaders. The proposed budget for 2024-2025 does the exact opposite. Over the last five years, my colleagues and I have been demoralized by the lack of respect and understanding for the important work that we do for Greenwich Public Schools. Every year, we are asked to do more with less. Last year, the English department lost 3.7 teachers. We replaced one. We teach every student at Greenwich High School all four years. I cannot remember the last time we ordered books. Imagine an English department in one of the wealthiest towns in Connecticut with no book budget. Our smaller classes have been labeled inefficient, and they are often collapsed, and yet these classes are intentionally small in order to support our most at-risk students. The winter season has become synonymous with freezing, not the temperature, but the budget, every single year. Given these circumstances, the proposed cuts of six teachers at GHS is unconscionable. When you cut the budget and resources year after year, you are telling the people on the front line, the teachers and the pairs, their work is not important. Moreover, you are telling our students that you don't value their education when they are unwilling to fund the resources critical to their needs as learners. Our teachers are overworked, stressed, and disrespected. We do not have time to fight for our jobs. We are busy doing the important work of teaching your students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Courtney Powers, and next up, Amy Muth.
Good evening, Chairman Kowalski, Superintendent Jones, and members of the Board and the teachers who I'm here with tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm a teacher at Greenwich High School. I've been for over 10 years now. I started with Mary Beth Smith, not the same year, um but I want to talk a little bit today about how what she says connects to your strategic plan. The challenges that we're facing due to continued budget cuts, more demands on our time, top-down decision-making, and defamation in the local media have had a measurable impact on teachers throughout the district and, more importantly, on students. This Board set out a strategic plan. We've been told about the goals. Goal number four, Greenwich High School will increase graduation to 99%. In January, a decision was made to move Learning Center aides from GHS to unfilled paraprofessional positions in our elementary schools. Our elementary schools need these personnel. They deserve the support. But what looked like a good idea on paper left our most vulnerable students at need, ninth graders new to the building who need to have a face to say hello to, someone who falls behind and needs academic support for someone they knew since ninth grade. These cuts also resulted in the cut of the Humanities Learning Center at the high school. It's one of our few Tier Two interventions, and as a student, as a teacher of ninth-grade students, it's one that I've had the most success with. Goal number six, mastery of reading, SATs. Well, cuts have been necessary for the BOE to make because of the BOT's budget restraints. Continuing to decide to trim from our schools, our teachers, or programs when we could be auditing, consulting costs, and extra spending happening in different areas of the budget is difficult for teachers to swallow. Great teachers continue to leave. Our sped and related services providers are fleeing to Darien in New York. Master teachers are retiring and not being replaced. There are at least six positions on the chopping block for next year at GHS, which has greatly impacted morale, because no one knows who's going to be losing a job. These cuts impact our high-end students the most. The students that need a young teacher to chat with in the hallway or someone with extra time, a small class, or someone to say hello to. Goal number seven, increase positive working environment for teachers and staff. There is a cultural problem throughout GPS, and it's largely because of top-down decision-making that leaves teachers on the sideline and hurts students. Long-term GPS teachers are aware of the truth. These issues are not unique to this budget cycle. It's demoralizing to the faculty and staff to watch GPS positions be cut, operating budgets be slashed year after year, knowing that demands on us will just continue to grow. As we know from the increase in special education students, 163 this year, times are changing. This is not a time for austerity. We need your help. Thank you.
Amy.
Dr. Jones, Chairman Kowalski, and BOE members, my name is Amy Muth. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would like to address the Board Retreat Meeting on February 9th, where we were presented a special education report. Thank you to Chair Kowalski for her efforts to obtain a deeper analysis of our special education program. Considering our history with students and families of special ed need with special ed needs, this is not an area we can blindly trust that is being given the appropriate attention. Unfortunately, the data presented lacked the depth needed to properly assess our program. The co-teaching model that was presented as being successful is really too early in the process to make those assumptions. We need to keep piloting the program for a minimum of five years in order to produce any adequate data to properly evaluate its effectiveness. In the meantime, how are we assessing these students to see if they are growing under the current model? Because those anecdotal anecdotal data points matter too. Without having a breakdown of the special ed demographics and referral criteria breakdown, it is impossible to assess how special ed students are really doing. Who's being referred and when? What is the learning or emotional need breakdown? Are the IEP goals and objectives being established to meet the needs of the students? Are we now overly concerned with checking our box of met? How are we evaluating whether IEPs are appropriate and working without looking at student mastering and achievement on a more granular level? At a minimum, we should be analyzing by diagnosis code so we can know our staff is trained to address the needs of our students. While student outplacement numbers continue to rise, are we gathering data and analyzing our programs to evaluate what we are doing wrong and what we need to be doing better to meet the needs of our students so they can actually stay in our district? We can't be afraid to take a hard look at how the current system is failing to provide the services our students actually need. The limited data that has been provided is very concerning. There's little transparency despite stated directives to the contrary. It has been years since our last comprehensive special education report. How many students have been lost in the system or forced out of it at that in that time? Behavioral interventionist was another glaring omission from the presentation. This was extremely puzzling, considering the buzz around town and the district related to the problems of dysregulation and subsequent behavioral problems. How many students are referred? How many students are on their caseloads? What do those interventions look like? How are we measuring effectiveness and efficiency? I'm gonna try to make it short, but we don't really have real data about the wellness center. You know, since it was introduced five years ago, who's being referred? What kind of neurodiversity education are we doing? What does dysregulation look like? Where is the psychoeducation that is half that needs to happen in our communities so we stop having the behavioral issues we are having? Our students are having a mental health crisis. There are significant reports in our schools around bullying, antisemitism, violence, and feelings of not belonging. When are we gonna look at our SEL programs and decide that it's not working?
If you have other comments, feel free to email them to us too, Amy.
Thank you very much. Um, now we're on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Jones?
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, we do have for people that um may dial out before we get to the calendar. I just want to point out that we do have a calendar change tonight, and that is um in order to host the presidential primary, which impacts a lot of our schools. Um, and so we will be closed on that day, and that will show up in our uh April, in the month of April. But there is a little bit of confusion also in that we are hosting another primary, which is out of the norm for us, um which is for the Republican Town Committee. That's a primary in March. Um, it only impacts three buildings, and we are open for all of our schools on that day. And I will, I want to thank the registrar of voters. They are messaging out that we're encouraging people to try to vote before school, after school, or by absentee ballot, but I just want to assure the community that in those three buildings impacted, which are central, new- which are Central, New Lebanon, and Riverside, we do have additional police on hand that day for security, should people need to vote during the actual school hours. Again, that'll be noted on the calendar change later, but I just wanted to speak to that, and especially on the security aspect.
I think that's worth highlighting because when people engage in nonsense, nonsensical political games, it has real impact on our schools and our system. So I think it's important to realize the resources and the impact it has on the schools when we engage in such nonsense.
Thank you. Also, I just want to note that our Board of Education, I'm just so pleased that, you know, we're putting a lot of visits out so that you can go to all of our schools. And I want to say thank you for those of you that aren't managing to make it work within your schedules. It really does mean a lot to the buildings when they can show off what they're doing. And I actually think it's such an educational opportunity to see everything from foundations to Hagerty to all sorts of things in motion. So thank you for those visits, and thank you to the principals for really, you know, doing a great job showcasing their schools. I just want to also note one question I've been getting all year long and will probably continue to get. You probably saw in the news today on the preschool age requirement. You know, I've been saying all year long it could change before we get to the end of the year. It is highly likely that they may push it back another year. I don't think it makes any really big change to us in the way that we've been messaging because we're going to work with our families regardless if they want early entry. So, but I will be watching that closely. We also this week had a second meeting on the reading waiver. But again, there's a lot of discussion at the legislative level. A lot of people advocating for it to go back to the Connecticut State Department of Education and have a little bit better process. And I also want to thank Representative Arzino, who is actually on the Education Committee, and he does an excellent job reaching out. I talked to him on his way to Hartford this morning because he wants to make sure that what he's advocating for is, you know, good for his home district. But he does have a strong voice on Ed Committee and serves there. So I just want to thank him for that publicly as well. Thank you.
Any questions or comments regarding the update? Okay, cool. Reports of officers committees and liaisons?
I have something.
Okay, go for it.
So at the last Julian Curtis Building Committee, we took some action on some various minor items like the elevator, the PA system, the clocks. And the architect is going to try to make some minor modifications to the handicap parking space in the back parking lot. But other than that, it looks like the project appears to be on track.
That's always good news. Thank you.
I agree.
Did you want me to jump in?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
So just a quick update on, we had an XCOM meeting, which is the high school student government. I think you heard some of their thoughts tonight. In addition to discussing all the fundraising opportunities that they're looking for coming up, there was a lot of discussion surrounding the National Lunch Program, which we briefly discussed here, and updating the payment systems. And there was a lot of interest around budget. And it's the first time I've had the opportunity to have a lot of the students actually reach out to ask questions on how the entire town's budget process works. So it was a really highly interesting meeting. They asked a lot of really great questions and had shared some of their concerns here. So I just want to thank them for coming out and speaking on that. The GHS Entry Committee has, Entryway Committee has been moving forward. There's been just some discussions on water lines. We've looked at some color samples, but everything is moving forward and, again, on the timeline as planned. So no bumps in the road there.
Great. Anyone else? Ms. Toh?
Just the usual call for Greenwich Alliance. I think it's the final call for trivia night, March 1st. Oh, my gosh, it's so ridiculous, but it turns out I can't go. I have to travel through all that. I feel truly horrible, but unfortunately, I'm going to be away. So anyway, but I think the Early Bird Special is over, unfortunately. But still, it goes to a good cause if you have to spend more money. Sorry. Thanks.
Ms. Coston?
I wanted to just give a short update on the Central Middle School Building Committee. The committee has been provided with a sheet or a document containing some ideas for value management to bring the project in line with the budget. It has been shared with the board. We are always happy with feedback. Dr. Jones and Dan as well have, and Dan Watson have that document to provide their feedback. And we'll be meeting on Tuesday to take up those items. So thank you.
So the Old Greenwich Building Committee also continues to meet. We are about a week away from having the construction estimates brought to the, to the committee. That'll be next Tuesday. Then we're going to, so we've got to mark our own calendars because the, we've going to have some decisions that are going to have to be made very quickly. So there'll be some value engineering over the next week before the, hopefully, the Old Greenwich Building Committee signs off on a recommendation to us around March 7th. They're asking that we convene before the BET's meets at the end of the month to sign off on certain things and numbers. We don't know yet what the, how much the construction documents are going to fall in line with our estimates, our estimated budget, but we are hopeful. However, there are some decisions that us as a Board of Ed are going to have to make regarding the Ed specs. In particular, remember I mentioned some ceiling and roofing things the last month that didn't quite relate to the Ed specs. But in particular, there's another issue around the playground. Our building professionals, professionals are suggesting that the, it might make sense to move the playground before phasing happens because otherwise there will be no playground at OG. And that has budget implications. And it's also, that has some budget implications, but it also is not in our current Ed specs. So that would have to be after a decision that would have to come back to us before going to the BET in order to make the, the final budget decision.
When you're, when the building committee is discussing moving the playground prior to phasing, are you looking to temporarily move it?
No.
Or move it completely?
Probably the, it looks like we're going to have to completely reconstruct the playground. That's why, yeah.
That's why I was just trying to clarify. Thanks.
Right. This also speaks to timeline because, so all things being equal, if the project is approved for next year's budget, there is a scenario where the playground construction could start during the school year next year. So that's it in place before real phasing starts next spring into the summer. Yep.
So the reason to have this on the agenda to meet before the BET meets is to, what, make a motion to include for the additional cost to move the playground now?
Well, so there's a couple of things, right? So we don't know completely what the, the final cost, what they, we don't know what the number is, right? We have some assumptions based on everything that we've done here and stuff. But there are some Ed spec decisions that need to, that we as a, as a board need to talk about before it goes to the BET.
So the question I have from a timing perspective, right? And we can take it up at the agenda planning, but I just want to plant the seed. We, our next meeting is not until March 21st. And I'm, if I'm reading between the lines, you're saying that you would ask us to meet before then because that's not enough time?
Yes.
It's not, because the BET meets to make their final decisions on March 25th, right?
We're looking at the second week in March is when we have to meet.
So you want before the Budget Committee discusses things?
Ideally.
But if you don't have a number yet, what are we going to be voting on? Because, so we will have a number by then to vote on for those purposes.
In about two weeks, a firm number.
Okay. Any other reports? No?
I have no one.
Okay, great.
So the Research Ed Committee continues to meet as well. A lot of excitement, and I actually have a souvenir, well, actually not a souvenir, but I have a flyer for you. Student volunteers are posting these in businesses around town. But so the Research Ed Conference, April 6th. It's really going to be a fantastic day of learning that we're really excited to host at Greenwich High School. The, we have to thank the Greenwich Alliance, who has come through with funding for a lot of teachers to come to cover the registration costs for a number of teachers. You can see on the back of that all the different authors that are coming. There will be a welcome reception on April 5th, the evening before, at the Bruce Museum to welcome all of the, these different folks to town. And any registered, the conference will be able to go to that as well. And then the conference will, all day on the, the 6th. We have slated now, we've got the high school jazz band. We've got one of the middle school jazz bands. We've got a cappella groups and string quartets. So it's really going to be a real showcase of the talent of our students. We have a number of Greenwich faculty who have registered to present. Dr. Benson Avengo is going to present as well, the emoji. And really, so it's really going to be, it's a tremendous positive showcase of all the wonderful things that happen here at Greenwich. It's really going to be a great day of learning. I have to thank Lil, who's been, her and GEA have been real partners in planning, planning the event. And we walked the space today with the District, with the GHS, with Ralph and the District Administration, Sophie and I, and it's going to be, it's going to be a real great day. Registration is now available, still available on the website. My favorite is actually Tom Sherrington's book, the, Rosenstein's Principles of Instruction, is his other book.
Ms. Coston?
I have just been reminded to give a plug. Do you know a distinguished educator who deserves recognition? Then please, by March 7th, get your nomination packets to send them in. There's information that has been in Dr. Jones's Friday emails, and we hope that we'll have a great crop of educators to be recognized at the end of the process. So March 7th is the deadline to nominate. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. With no other reports, why don't we move on to our discussion items? Top of the list is for Dr. Jones, the Western Middle School Soil Update.
And I will be very quick. Just as a reminder, this is just an item we're putting on every single month. We still have trucks moving lots of dirt, and that's about my only update. But we will, before the end of the year, have the, you know, have the company come and give you a more thorough update. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Mr. D'Amico, you're up with the Greenwich High School math textbooks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Jones, and for all those in attendance this evening, either here in person or listening in. Tonight, we're here to talk to you about two things. One, our pre-calculus and calculus selection, and also our K5 Social Studies Primary Resource Selection. Just as a reminder to everyone, our curriculum goes through various cycles. As I reported in the, in the fall of last year, you know that when we get to the review and then ultimately the selection cycle, this is where the board has an opportunity to review the review committee's recommendation, ask questions, and ultimately endorse the committee's recommendation. And so the way that we do it here in Greenwich is we identify a textbook or a primary resource review committee comprised of teachers, Board of Education members, parents, and we have an administrator chair that committee. And so for our pre-calculus and calculus chair, we have Andrew Byrne. And Andrew is here tonight and is happy to answer any questions that you have regarding our selection for our new textbooks.
Any questions? I know Kathleen does. Okay.
Which Port of Emmer, Member, committee, you did?
Okay, so do you want to share anything with us before I ask questions?
I mean, I'm happy to share unless you'd like to ask a question. I mean, it was a, we were presented with, as you guys read the information, quite a few different textbooks to come forward, and it was a pretty well-rounded discussion. There were two that truly stood out, and the committee has moved forward one for very specific reasons. I, there was a question on budget, but I didn't get the answer to that one. So I'll let you address that. But it was a pretty unanimous decision by the, by the committee. And, you know, I think the presentation purpose, purpose, yeah, perfectly presented the reasons why one stood out over the others.
I also would like to add that one of the things that I added several years ago was I thought it made sense to have a four-pronged approach to the review. So we have an independent textbook review committee, which I do not sit on. And so we have an administrator chair that committee. They make a recommendation to me, then I do an independent review of their recommendation. Then I make a recommendation to the superintendent. The superintendent reviews my recommendation and the recommendation of the committee, as long as they're the same recommendation. And then the superintendent makes the recommendation to the board.
That is a lot of checks and balances. Okay. So, Andrew, so I guess the big questions, let me see. So the AP pre-calculus, which is the first year we're running this, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so the recommendation then is to utilize really this book. Is it Demana, right? But then, and everyone's comfortable with the fact that you go from Demana to a Larson. Is that sort of the takeaway?
Well, the interesting fact is that we are choosing Demana, which is a product of Savis, formerly known as Pearson, both for pre-calculus and calculus and calculus AB. Where the differentiation is happening is at the BC level. So we wanted to have some sort of differentiation for those students who it's not uncommon to have them take AP pre-calculus, calculus AB, and then the following year take calc BC. So we thought it was problematic to have potentially a child going from AB to BC in the same textbook. So we wanted a more aligned with the student who might proceed to be in advanced calculus. If, if so, at the end of the line there.
Got it. That's interesting. I didn't realize there were many students that went from AB to BC. I thought you, okay, interesting, okay. So, and then, and I know the Larson book has been, well, it's proven. And then that obviously goes from into the advanced calculus, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, because you just sort of pick up, I guess, later in the book is how it works?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I was just going to add that one of the biggest discussion points that the committee had had was prior to even looking at any, having any of the presentations is if we would need to pick one textbook to cover all of the different math courses or if there was an opportunity to connect and pick multiple options. And so we went into it looking at both options. And after deciding that certain textbooks worked better for the lower courses and some worked better for the higher, it was a question that was actually put forward to the teachers and the students. And we asked the students if they felt it would be difficult for them to go from one or the other. And they were pretty clear that it, it made no, made very little difference, but it made much more of a difference to the educators because the second textbook that was selected for BC Calc that moves right into Ad Calc better aligned with the AP courses' needs and for the test, and aligned better. So for them to use the other textbook would provide, would require the teachers to do a lot more work to try to realign everything. So it actually worked out much better to select both.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch.
I have a question. So we have so many high-performing students that do so well on their AP Calc and BC Calc exams. They get fours and fives. So it would seem to me that we have these kids that are doing really well. So are we sure we need to change something that's not broken?
You know, that's a really great question. I think, you know, we're not making a real seismic change, I will say. The, both the pre-calculus and the calculus books that are being recommended tonight are really just updated versions of what was adopted back in 2000. So that was also somewhat good news for the process and for the committee was that we're not asking the teachers nor the students to do really a seismic shift, one that would certainly set us back. If anything, we're hopeful by having resources that are, you know, 20 years older and embed the technology and other platforms available that our students might even do better. So I wouldn't worry, I, I don't want the Board nor the teachers or the students to worry that we would potentially take a step backwards for whatever reason.
Thank you.
Clarified, the last time this curriculum was updated was 20 years ago?
No, our curriculum is updated weekly, monthly, at a variety of meetings. And so the resource itself, yes, is approximately 20 years old.
Calculus hasn't changed very much.
I, I agree with Mr. Kittle. It is important to notice though that, and I think you've heard me say this before, is that the College Board does look at the AP curriculum roughly every 10 years and does make minor adjustments. So if you could think about, there's been two or maybe three revisions to the AP exam since we last adopted and our scores haven't improved so much, is really telling to the, the hard work and dedication of all our, our teachers and the time and efforts that they put in. And I'm very hopeful by having a resource that is aligned and doesn't have extraneous information or missing information that will actually take some of the pressure and stress off and, and allow us to do an even better job.
And I was just going to say, I think the older resources that we had were not being updated with some of the more rich online connections for students and some of the other support materials that the students have come to become used to at, in some of these programs. And I think, again, that was addressed in the presentation, talking about students learning after school or being able to have the opportunity to, to reteach themselves and things like that. Some of our older textbooks, you know, did not have that same impressive online component and support for students, parents, and the teachers.
So yeah, so first of all, and I really appreciated the, how the presentation highlighted the, the voices of different people in the committee, particularly the students and faculty. So thank you for that. That was, that was, and that was helpful. We had an email exchange. I don't know if you could talk a little bit just about the, the, like the instructional approach or philosophy underlying the program, I know we talked about.
Yeah, I would say, you know, as a math department, K-12, Mr. Reed and I are having conversations about how we can ensure that there is that a consistent approach of math instruction. And certainly, when a lot of us went to school, it was, you know, it was, we were crunching formulas and getting numbers. And now, in the last 15 years, there's a much greater emphasis on problem solving and conceptual understanding. And so from those two pillars, we're trying to work with our students to really hopefully imitate experiences that they will see in the real world. And so nice thing about these resources, in addition to the technology that Ms. Hirsch has talked about, is the real-world connections that our students are making to things that are happening now and, and will happen. And so, you know, if you think some of our resources reference things like VCRs and CD players, and now our kids are reading about AI and, and how other applications in, in space and time. And so we're really trying to get our students to be much more collaborative in their approach to learning mathematics, to really have math be a way to teach and firm up problem-solving skills. And so we are experiencing that shift. Peter Lelagey there in the 14 Practices of Mathematical Thinking is, I think, going to be an important resource for us moving forward. We're just starting at the high school to have the conversations. We, we got the book to each of the teachers. We're going to have at least one PD session in March that will begin to kind of unpack that. But I imagine in beginning next year and in future years, we're going to even dig deeper as to how we can internalize those practices so that we can not only make our students great problem solvers, but also get them to think mathematically in other aspects of their lives.
I just want to give a shout out to Mrs. Black because I saw her testimonial and I had her as my BC Calc teacher. She's an amazing BC Calc teacher.
She's, she's amazing, as well as all our teachers on the committee. They did put in-
And my other former math teacher.
Yeah, I was going to say, if anything with Ms. Frenchella and Ms. Black and Ms. Welham, they're like the dream team. The fact that those were the three testimonials, I'm sort of done. So, and, but I also watched the students too, and they were, they were great. In fact, I think one was here tonight, wasn't?
Yes, Kyle was here early.
Yeah, it was one of the national merit finalists, not, no surprise there.
And I think headed the math team as well.
Yep, exactly. The only other thing I was going to say, but I think it's just because it's off-cycle or maybe because we approved it last year, and I'm sorry, I don't remember. But did we make a decision on Honors of Linear Algebra, which I know would be sort of in terms of the text to go with that class, because I know it wouldn't be aligned with this necessarily, but just wondering.
When the Board approved Honors of Linear Algebra, we did have a suggested text, but we haven't gone through a similar process. Again, that would be dictated by the number of students who might enroll in linear algebra.
Got it. And then we'll just sort of have to move quickly.
100%, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I, no other comments. I just wanted to say, first of all, I think that the, the way you've put together the presentation was really helpful. And obviously, all of us have an affinity towards the teacher's mind, particularly lies with Ms. Black. And so anything that she says, yes, too, I do too. But I also think that the, the student comments were, were great. And I, what is, what I think is exceptionally important about these materials is the fact of the, the additional resources that it provides, you know, after the classroom teaching, which I think is really important, you know, having my own kids go through math classes and I can't help them, I'm not Kathleen or Cody, so. But that's why I found this black, anyway. But the, but ultimately to have those resources to be able to let, you know, kids do more and understand more on their own without additional resources and also for the parents as well. You know, we've all tried to Google something, but we're not getting there. But I, so I, I really think that these can provide a lot of benefits for parents at home to be able to just provide a little bit more help and insight that they wouldn't otherwise be able to get. So I think that's a great addition to this.
We agree.
All right. All right. With no other questions, I guess we're moving on to the K5 Social Studies Resources.
We are. And before we transition, I would just like to also recognize Andrew and his review committee for their countless hours of thoughtful review. When they submit the package to me, you can tell by reviewing the amount of documentation that they submit that it's an extensive, thoughtful, very transparent process, which is what we processed, what, with, with, is, which is what I promised the Board that we would have moving forward with regards to primary resources, that it would be a very transparent process. It would be an inclusive process and that we would be upfront about the fact that we're going to be very aggressive about addressing some issues in terms of outdated material. And so, yes, calculus may not have changed much in 20 years, but it certainly was in need of a facelift and that's what we've provided. So with that, we'll transition to our recommendation to the Board for our K5 Social Studies Primary Resource. And here tonight, to field any questions that you may have, is our K5 Science and Social Studies, our K8 Science and our K5 Social Studies Coordinator, Ms. Tara Fogel.
And just to that point, Mark, before it speaks, I just want, I do want to echo your comments to Andrew. So if it wasn't clear about, from all of us, of how much went into this, it's clear from the materials, the review, the packet. I don't, I think the lack of questions just is not necessarily because we can't speak to calculus like some others can. I think it goes to the fact that you've given us, you know, all of the answers that we need. So thank you for all that hard work. Much appreciated.
Did you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, I was the, also the Board of Education member on this textbook adoption committee, or review committee as well. You know, following in what Mr. D'Amico has said, the thing that impresses me the most is not just the fact that we have so much representation and so many educators who want to step forward to spend the, I mean, this is a lot of time that they spend doing these reviews on their own. But they will bring them, you know, both on math and social studies. They'll bring them into the classroom, they'll, you know, see how the kids react to them. They have spent countless, countless hours of their own free time delving into both of these, you know, all of the textbooks, all the presentations, and trying them out. And really getting into the nitty-gritty. So it's a big, huge thank you to, you know, our administration and our educators for doing that, as well as the parent representatives that we've had on, because they go in there, they read, they delve in as well. So it's a lot of time and effort and it's much appreciated.
And that's, and that's also, it's a good time to remind everyone, when we present the Curriculum Management Plan in the fall, that's the reason why we don't do five or six reviews in a year, because we want to be extremely thoughtful and we want to put the time and the effort into getting our selections right. And so we narrow our focus to make sure that the priorities are moved forward in a timely manner, but a thoughtful manner. And so that's why we have a five-year plan. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Fogel.
Thank you, Mark. I also just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself more formally to our two newest Board members who started during my maternity leave. It's my first chance back post-baby, so to Ms. Visal Walsh and to Ms. Coven, hello. I am your K5 Social Studies and K8 Science Coordinator, reporting live tonight. I also just wanted to let you guys know that I do have copies of every student material and teacher guide here for grades K through 6. You also have access to a virtual login that is live through April 15th, that is available in the resources that were shared with you online and the committee's website. I understand that Social Studies is not always as benign as something like calculus. So you may have more specific questions and want to get deeper into content. So I will avail myself to go through any of those resources with you or any other members of your constituency groups who would like to learn more information. As this is a first read, you may have some specific questions I can field. You may want some time to digest those materials and we can talk more in March, but I'm here to answer anything right off the top as well.
Would you, did you sit on the committee?
Yes.
So do you like to say-
Happy to, happy to say the same thing, you know, again, and, you know, I know we asked a lot of in-depth questions and as to why we were making some of these changes. And again, it better aligns with the newer standards that were presented a few years back and really is a better opportunity for a lot of our students to do some cross, cross-learning between social studies and a lot of the other, you know, areas that they're studying at the elementary school level. And more importantly than that, this really comes alive for the students, the textbook that, that we were looking at best. It really came, I mean, I don't know, for me, it didn't have fishy crackers, but it came alive. And the, something that really I, I think would engage students in student learning. And it did have all of the additional pieces that we were looking for, I think, for students with learning differences. It had a lot of support for educators, a lot of, you know, additional support for families at home and extra resources that were things that, you know, would allow students to be able to travel from their computer around to sort of delve deeper where they would like to. So, and I know Michael Joseph had a question, but.
Go for it, Mike.
So, so thanks, Tara. The, and I appreciate the, to bring all the information and the virtual login. The, I was at one point a social studies teacher, so I'll take a look at everything. And I was a social studies district, K5 district coordinator. So, you know, you play your cards, you got, maybe someday you too can sit behind the dirty table. Perchance to dream.
I'm looking at my future.
There you go. That's right. Could you talk, we, could you talk a little bit about, like, what Cameron was saying? How you see this K5 curriculum articulating up into middle school?
Yeah. So one of the things that we did when the committee was created, and I did go ahead and select the committee members and ensure that they wanted to be a part of it before I left for my maternity leave. And what we did is we included middle school teachers and our middle school coordinator, who is Principal Tom Healy, who also works as the 6'8" Social Studies Coordinator, was also a social studies teacher, has a lot of skin in the game here. And what we did on the committee is we asked those middle school partners and, and Tom to look at these resources through the lens of vertical articulation. How do we know that students who leave fifth grade are ready to grapple with more in-depth, complex content and skills through the social studies lens? The other really important thing to note is that in fifth grade, we have 30 minutes of social studies on a unit-by-unit basis. When we hit sixth grade, we have daily social studies for between 40 and 50 minutes. It's a big change and we need students to be ready to take their skills from reading, writing, and social studies into longer social studies blocks. So in looking at these materials, we looked at standard alignment. K5 was our first benchmark of, do these align with the standards K5? Because our 6'8" curriculum is obviously aligned with the standards K5 for the state, for the Connecticut framework. Once we went ahead and checked that box, we looked at the developing complexity from K to 2, 3 to 5, and then 6 to 8. And the conceptual storyline of this primary resource is first we start with students in kindergarten. It's me, it's my family, my community at home. We go deeper into my community as a school, then my community as a town, local government in Connecticut, and finally, my nation. We look at geography and then we go into the first part of US history up to 1870. From there, they go into world history within 6 through 8. So our students who leave fifth grade have all the content background they need, as well as foundational skills. We looked at it from skills and content. And standard, obviously.
So one of the things, you know, we always hear with regards to, you know, teachers and, and lack of time, and we heard a little bit more about that this evening. Obviously, changing a textbook and a curriculum causes additional time constraints on teachers. How do you view implementing, you know, if we were to implement this textbook, how that would impact what teachers need to do to get up and ready? And how does that impact the resources that they already have in teaching this curriculum? And would there need to be additional teacher development and other planning for them to take this on?
Yeah, to be frank, the current curriculum as it stands does not have a singular primary resource. Teachers sometimes, as you know, ended up farbing their own resources elsewhere, pre the vetting rubric. What this does is it solves that problem because everything is one-stop shopping in one digital and physical paper platform. We believe, and the teachers on the committee felt, that this was going to streamline their planning because they know where they left off on which page of the workbook they're moving forward with their students. The inquiry plans are set out for them. While we've made Band-Aids and stopgaps, while social studies wasn't up on the Curriculum Management Plan to provide teachers with better Google Slides to go along, better planning outlines and pacing guides, I think this is no longer a Band-Aid. This is our overhaul. This is our primary resource that our curriculum can be more strongly built off of. We still honor all the GPS lessons about Greenwich, about local history, et cetera. But now we have a primary resource that is one-stop shopping. There will be professional learning involved. We'll have an activation day in either June or August, depending on how that time goes. And then what was so nice about this product, and Karen spoke to it a little bit before, we did have to go a bit back and forth with getting a quote to a place that we were comfortable with. But they tailored the professional learning for exactly not only what we need, but what do we actually have time for? They wanted to throw in all this PD and it's going to be cheaper. And I'm like, okay, but I don't have eight days of professional learning to give to K5 Social Studies when it is a half hour by students' day. So I was able to tailor professional learning for exactly what we need, the time we have available. And it's a three-to-five-year scaffolded plan in professional learning as teachers need more time or less time at different grade levels to streamline what they need to teach. So there is no planning outside of those professional learning days. That's our goal for the teachers. There's a lot of planning with math and ELA and social studies should not be an additional burden for them.
Do you think all, overall, this may, nothing frees up time? That's, I get that. And, but will not take away more time for teachers. It will in fact either be flat or perhaps give them some additional time to spend on another subject matter.
That is exactly what I believe is true.
So that was one question, because I know we had gone back and forth and that was the piece that I hadn't had an opportunity to ask you about. So I know that they were also offering for professional development. If there are teachers that do have specific questions or things outside of the traditional professional developments, there was going to be additional support still for those teachers to reach out, am I correct?
We have guaranteed them for, we have teacher choice days as part of our Wednesday professional learning calendar and we've guaranteed those for two times per year for the first three years of implementation.
Perfect. And I know the staffing there had said that they would also work, you know, if our teachers had individual specific questions, right? They'll still be able to provide that support.
And one of the pieces I pushed back about is not doing grade band level professional learning. I said I want six developers, one for each grade band of teachers. I don't want a kindergarten teacher sitting through a K through 2 explanation. I want them grappling with their kindergarten content. So we went ahead and tailored our professional learning that no time is wasted because we don't have any to waste.
Well, I personally want to say thank you for going back to the table because I know this, this resource stood out so much so from the rest. And there was a, a larger price tag. So I appreciate you going back to make sure that that worked for our budget because that was the biggest stopgap for- because that was the biggest stopgap for, otherwise this was heads and, heads and tail, it's beyond everything else we looked at. So thank you for that.
And there's a lot of content to dig through, so take your time and please ask questions along the way.
I realize Wendy and Sophie, you may have questions and I apologize for not being recognized. Do either of you have questions?
I do. I'm just wondering, hi Tara, nice to meet you.
Hi.
Thank you so much for putting all this together with Mr. D'Amico. I'm just wondering, is this program tailored to standards from a few years ago? Or the new Connecticut standards that are going to be implemented in the 24, 2024, 2025 school year?
The standards that we use to compare the alignment were the October 2023 release standards. So all of these units and the way that they are going to work within our Greenwich curriculum are the 2023 release standards to be adopted in the 24, 25 school year.
Okay, thank you.
Sophie, did you have any questions?
No, I'm fine. Thank you though.
Okay.
And I'll leave the physical resources here, but Wendy, Sophie, I have extras in my office if I can drop them off places if you're interested.
That would be great. Thank you. I'd love to see them.
Yeah. All righty.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much, Sarah. And welcome back.
Thanks.
Send pictures of the baby, please.
Oh, she's real cute.
I bet she is. All right, Dr. Jones, you're up with the 2023, 2024 calendar update.
Can I interrupt? Because I'd love to make a motion to be able to.
Yes, why don't you go ahead?
Move these to action if possible. So, and then I can, you know, if Dr. Jones wants to then do all the presentations for, would that be okay to do that now?
Yeah, why don't you make a motion to put D, E, and F up for a vote?
So, as we do most years, I'd like to make a motion to move all three 2023, 2024 calendar updates listed on the agenda as discussion items E, F, and G to adjust our approved calendar to add a date for the presidential primary and to set the dates for graduation on the last day of school from discussion items to action items.
Yes, except you said E, F, and G and it should be D, E, and F.
I'm sorry about that. D, E, and F.
Perfect.
My bad.
I second. All in favor? Okay, eight, zero. Thank you.
So I don't know if you want to take that up in the middle of discussion or you want to move that down? Because now it's action. That's why I wanted to jump in before.
I don't have a, I don't have a problem doing it right now. It's on the agenda. We've moved it to just vote on it. I don't think that really takes it too far out of the order, given what's next on the agenda anyway. Go for it, Dr. Jones.
So item D is the calendar update, which just again notes April 2nd will be a day when schools are closed. And we did list these each separately just so somebody didn't miss an item to make it easier. So I don't think I'd need to belabor the point, we're going to be out of school or.
You want, you have to make a motion to make the calendar adjustments, the adjustments to the 2023, 2024 calendar to make April 2nd a non-school day for the presidential primary.
I second. All in favor?
No, no, we're just moving it so that the discussion, we didn't, we didn't.
Sorry, jumped again. Go for it, Ms. Taff.
I have a question. So I, I, one of the registrar voters called me and, I mean, they can't really opine on this, but it really depends on voter turnout, which I know we moved this primary up, Connecticut did, because we wanted to be more relevant, I guess. But the reality is we're not. And I'm not really sure what the voter turnout's really going to be since both of them seem to be sort of a foregone conclusion. So given that, I don't love having to add another day. So is there a way we can not close?
It does impact a lot of our buildings and when we stay open, it can be quite expensive. We have to hire extra security from early in the morning and, you know, until late and you're paying, you know, it's expensive, let me just say that, to try to stay open. But the other thing is, the last time we opened schools, we did have a request from GEA that we not do that again. And especially, I have no idea with this voter turnout what it's going to look like, but having people coming in and out of the building, so many of our buildings when we're in school and also just from the safety standpoint, it's a difficult thing to do, very hard to manage. And I know, I don't, and I wish we could have a virtual day. If we could get that fixed at the legislature, that would be a much better option. So maybe that's where we really need to put our efforts in, you know, going forward with all of our representatives to see if on issues like this, we could in Connecticut do a virtual day like they do in states all across the country now. But it's just not an option for us.
And just for, because I know it came up before, somebody asked, just the last time we had a presidential primary in 2020, it was originally scheduled for, you know, mid-year at the same time and it was moved twice and ended up happening in August or August 11th or something. So it didn't affect or impact our school day.
Go ahead.
Help me understand this because I know it's related. So what are we looking at the last day of school?
Yeah, that is actually item F right now, but that includes five snow days, which is June 25th. But again, that includes five snow days, so we have to wait and get closer to June.
We've had one, ostensibly this primary would be a second, kind of the second snow day.
If you ask Linda who does the calendar, she says, no, it's not a snow day, but yes, that's how I look at it too.
Right.
Yeah.
So we, we, even with the primary day closed, there's still a possibility that we ending during the week of the 17th, not going into the week of the 24th.
That's correct. We're very hopeful.
Are we, are we, for a five-snow-day year, are we tracking lower than that right now?
We've only had one snow day.
That would be like.
Tracking good right now.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And we can't just say to have your primary somewhere else? I mean, it's.
I, I will say, I will say, you know, there are towns that host their primaries differently and don't use the schools in this day and age. And, you know, I've seen it done in churches and different places, but.
Who decide, who actually has control over that?
I got, you know, I don't, I don't really know the legalities of how they choose the sites and which ones. So that would be, I'd have to ask the registrar voters. They do it all over town. I mean, it takes a lot of site.
Same thing. It's voting by district, so I don't think you can do that.
Let's have a bipartisan revolt against using the schools for a meaningless primary vote.
So can I just ask one? It's confirmed, because I know we've gone back and forth, that whether or not we were actually going to have a primary. So we're at, or.
The state.
The state.
The state puts it out.
Okay. Oh, so the primary discussion was about something else that I'm thinking of. Okay, so it's definitely set and it's April 2nd.
Yeah, and they moved it up when, versus prior presidential elections. Connecticut, because they wanted to be more relevant, apparently. So. It's really unfortunate because I just, I wish we could turn it into, well, not even that, sure. But like maybe a day where the students learn a little bit about the primary process or something and they're in school. I think that would be super cool.
Again, for me, I have no idea what the turnout's going to be like. And the other, the other pressure points we have are things like parking. You know, you, you look at like some of our buildings, we have no parking. And where you have to have parking spaces available for all those people who come to vote. But whatever you decide as a board, we will make work.
But, okay, so let's just play this out for a second. And if you could lay it out very clearly for us. If we vote no to close, what does that look like?
That means the schools are open. It impacts, I believe it's like seven or eight schools that would be open. We would have to hire, and which is hard to do as well, hire police on basically overtime. And they would have to be there very early in the morning until, you know, to basically the hours of school. We have to make sure that we have parking spaces, you know, available for people. So what that would look like, I don't know. We would have to go in and really look at how much parking we have available and where it is. Where we have, you know, enough parking for our teachers and our staff. The big, the big issue is security.
I have a question.
Go for it, Sophie.
Sorry, so it's this, this is all, we all, we pay for this. This comes out of the Board of Ed budget if we have to pay for security and all of that? Or is the town picking up the cost of this?
What's interesting is it's been, it, from my understanding, it's been done both ways. Sometimes the, the registrar voters pick it up. And it really just, I have no idea on this presidential primary. Again, it's kind of out of my wheelhouse here.
What's up? That was going to be my question. So if the schools open, does it fall under our budget? And if the schools are closed, it falls under the towns? Just because, you know, that, that's kind of a big deal. And the only other thing I know we had talked about when we first, when you first brought this up was possibly trying to use this as a part of a professional learning day. So was there a reason as to why we, we didn't try to swap that?
We had, we had done that once before and again, the teachers weren't even comfortable with that for a variety of reasons.
So, so, so for what it's worth, I understand that the hemming and hawing here. But given the snow days build into the calendar and whatnot and hearing quite strongly from our teachers and everyone else about the discomfort of these days, I don't, I don't see why. I think, I think it's something, I mean, I'm prepared to vote in favor of it. I think, I think it's a recommendation that probably makes sense. If our biggest concern is that this could push the school year into the end of June. I think, you know, that's a, that's a, that's an every four-year roll the dice that we might have to deal with. I do think we do need to note that that Sunday is Easter. So we likely, if we are closed on Tuesday, I could see Monday being a low attendance day. But.
Yeah, and I think we also have that Friday off before. So I would imagine it's going to be a very low attendance day on Monday as well as a possibility of a, you know, a high substitute rate. And, and I'm not making any comments about the substitute rate. I'm just saying everyone would want to extend the weekend.
Just to add one more thing too, one of the things we run into is that not all of our, you know, our teachers that are eligible to vote in the primary are also going to want to go vote. And so sometimes that, we can have people where we're covering either early or late, depending on where they live.
A lot of Dean Phillips fans, yeah.
My only other concern is for working parents. I mean, this is not a day that you expected to have to get childcare. So, I don't know.
Can we ask, can we like go to the town and say, hey, can you guys, do you guys want to consider doing this at town hall or something? I mean, it would be one thing if it was like a real primary, but this seems silly.
Like honestly, right? We all, I think we all know who's running for president.
I'm, I'm not weighing on, weighing in on whether it's silly or not. I just, I, I know it might also been, be slightly confusing to people who go vote in their districts to have everything moved. And I don't, I, I'm just putting that out there. And I also know there are many parents, while it's difficult to try to arrange childcare, it's an opportunity for playdates and stuff like that for younger students, but I'm just, I'm using it as, you know, mental health wellness day. But my point is more, most, we usually put our students' security and safety at first. And to have people wandering in and out to vote is concerning sometimes for students. You know, you have, you're not going to have people, you know, wandering around the school, et cetera. So.
So I just, I have a follow-up question on that. I mean, I'm, while I think it's silly to have to close on the primary because there's probably going to be like 10 people who show up to vote. But my, my, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm with Mike on this. Like I, I get it, but our days, if you look at where we're at, still probably puts us out at getting out of school if I calculated this right. What, June 20th or so, which if I recall last year, I think we got out on like June 26th. It was really late, so we're still ahead of the game on that. But to comments made, is there even a possibility to talk to the town to say, can we host this all at town hall or otherwise? And the reason why, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if anybody does. But is it worth, if those that feel strongly about it, is it worth asking that question to see if we keep the day open? But I also realize that our next meeting pushes us out to a point where we would have to hold a vote and that may impact those parents. You know, we can give them a longer stretch to cover for the day as opposed to waiting until our next meeting in late March to try to cover for that day if in fact we vote that the only option here is to close schools.
But remember, we will need a special meeting for Old Greenwich, probably around March 7th-ish.
Yeah, so Karen, I don't know. I do think that the registrar voters might be able to weigh in and tell us if, what they, if they have a sense for voter turnout, if they could look at their respective numbers. I'm not sure if there's any insight they could provide at this point, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if it's just a fruitless errand to ask if there's a possibility to have it hosted someplace else so it allows us to keep schools open. Because I do agree with Dr. Jones and with Karen that it, it really makes it difficult to keep schools open while, regardless of who turns out for voting purposes, because there is a safety issue, there is a parking issue. And who knows who, who's all coming? So, and I certainly wouldn't want to make students, parents, or educators feel uncomfortable with strangers coming in the building. So, um, look, he, here's what my proposal is. Let, let's vote on this to say yes or no to closing schools. If however that vote turns out, then we will know what we need to do in asking further questions to see if there's a possibility. And if it's something we have to take up further, we can do that.
Would you guys, or be interested in doing a contingent vote, like we go at? Because I feel like this is one of those rare issues where like all practical people may look and be like, yeah, this doesn't really make sense. And so we go ask and maybe they're like, oh, it's impossible because we're lazy or whatever. But say, do a contingent vote. If we can't get a change, then we close it because I agree with the snow day point, but if we can, then it's better.
I was gonna say, I mean, I, I don't know the legalities around what, where we can and cannot host. And I, I think that you make a good point. But the one thing I was gonna say is if we do decide to not have, not hold school with students in it on that particular day, I would love to revisit the opportunity to, to hold some professional development if possible. And maybe we can ask Lil, who's sitting here, if she would do a quick, yeah, yeah, survey or something.
Saying, let's do some professional development isn't, isn't, I mean, that is, that is not, that is not something organized quickly.
No, no, we have professional development already on other days so that you don't want to, because the teachers don't have to extend just because of this. That's what I was saying, we were talking about moving.
But isn't that a contract problem issue with the number of days that they're then in school versus not in school? Whether they're educating, whether they're teaching or they're learning, right? That they're contracted days.
Yeah, they have 187 days is what, you know, they, we can't push them to 100 and, you know, 88. And, and we want to be really thoughtful about also just those professional development days because it takes the team a long time to prepare for those days too. And we want to make sure that we use it really well. And if you remember, one of the things that we're trying to look at when Tara referenced it tonight is because we moved all of our curriculum money, trying to get the budget down, if you remember, into ARP. So they're trying to, because ARP has to be spent, you know, by the beginning of school next year. They're pre-ordering like $800,000 of materials that if they're able to get, let's, for instance, use Social Studies and all of that arrives in time, they will be able to use that professional day that they actually have in June to implement those materials, which is what we did last year or the year before on another large implementation. So we're, we're working around some issues like that too.
I don't know how a contingent vote would work, Cody, to be honest. So I, if anyone has a suggestion, Ms. Costin.
Should we take a sense of the meeting?
Sure, we can take a sense of the meeting. All of those that would likely be in favor of. having April 2nd as a no school day due to the primary election, raise your hand. So.
Before you do that, can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Because when we first talked about this as a possibility, I believe Dr. Jones had mentioned waiting to get information from the registrars. Did they recommend that we had, like that, you know, that this would need to be held in that when schools closed? I mean, I don't know if they had turnout numbers from, from prior primaries. I, that's, that's the only thing I wanted to ask, if that was their recommendation, because I know you said you were gonna wait to hear from them.
You know, they prefer for us to be closed, but they don't dictate that to us. Um, probably the only time where we really had a big issue uh, was when we had all of our professional development. I think it was at GHS on one day. And then they realized that um, they didn't have adequate space. Um, that was a big issue, but I mean, they do leave it up as a school decision, you know, in the Board of Ed.
She seemingly was okay, I have to say, when I spoke to Mary Haggerty. But so, I mean, I guess I'm going to abstain on this. I mean, I'm also like looking at the fact that you're going to be out of school then seven days in April and May, the beginning of May is AP exams. I mean, losing another day when you're already sort of putting, it's really tight for the high school to get all those kids prepared for AP exams. And it frankly concerns me to take another day out of April. So I guess I'll abstain, um, because it does make me think that, I wish we had other alternatives.
So.
We, so we don't, we can, we can take the motion to vote on it off the table and ask for more information on this particular item. I don't know what that then does for our next two items for, you know, we can still set a date, I assume for.
I think you'd have to set the graduation date so that people can plan because you have vendors and other things. Yeah. Yeah, I think that obviously impacts the la, the last day of school. Yeah, I, look, I'm in an agreement if we could get a little bit more information and if we had some other options because I think the, the key point here is actually what Ms. Stowe raised, which is all of the number of days that we are out of school in April and in the beginning of May, or sorry, the end of March and into April, and then the fact that AP exams and most of the seniors will be done by, you know, the 17th of May and getting things done. I just think that that puts a little bit of strain, it puts a lot of strain on, you know, one academic day of, you know, learning and reviewing. So.
I'm happy to withdraw my motion.
Great. Perfect. Um, so I think the other two items, oh, well, let's take up, um, so I think with respect to the last day of school, we can't have, um, we can't take that up, which is fine. Just for brief discussion, the last day of school was going to be suggested as, I think, the 25th for all students and then except for the 24th for sixth and ninth graders. But that will be impacted by the decision that we make on April 2nd. So I think we have to. And snow days, right.
Well, I, the question is whether we can still set it because it, if we don't use the rest of the snow days anyway, it still moves back. So you can still set it.
Oh, we can still set it.
The graduation is the one that's, you know, that whether it would be that Monday or Tuesday, but I suppose we can have that as a quick discussion.
Okay, that's a good point. We should, we, we could, we can vote on that. So do you want to put the motion on the table, Karen?
Uh, sure. I would be happy to make the motion to set this year's graduation date for the 2023, 2024 uh, school year as Tuesday, June 18th.
Um, just as a reminder, it's been just a couple of years ago when the law changed.
Second, Kathleen's second.
Um, with the law changed, because I get this question a lot. Um, we used to have to make sure we had X amount of days before we could set graduation, or you'd have to get almost all the way into June. That no longer is the case. So we can set the graduation date. Uh, like we could set next year's right now if you wanted to. Um, it, it's completely open, but we try to get it as close to the end of the school year and everything that's known. But it's very helpful for families to know when graduation is because we do have a lot of people that travel and come in for graduation. So, and of course, we work with the high school to pick the date.
Any, Karen?
Uh, the only question I have is, did we pick June 18th irrespective of being closed on April 2nd as to not do it on a Monday? Or did, would it normally have been on the 17th and then because we were, not, not, excuse me, April 2nd, um, for the presidential primary, or did we move it to Tuesday, the 18th due to the possibility of closing schools on the 2nd of April?
So, but part of the question, and this goes back to just as we do this every year. If you do it on the Monday, it means you're also setting up on like a Sunday, um, which will actually be before that because they have to practice. So you need your practice day, and then you need your graduation day. And then you would be setting up when it's also more expensive and paying, you know, time and a half and double time and all that kind of stuff.
So my point is we can still vote on this whether or not we're closed on April 2nd. That, that was the reason I was asking.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Uh, all in favor of having graduation on June 18th, raise your hands. Great. It's an eight oh vote.
Families, start booking your restaurants now.
Uh, Karen, do you want to make the next motion?
Uh, sure.
Oh, wait. I think Sophie has her hand up.
Sophie, you have your hand up. Is that inadvertent?
Oh, do I?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to set the final day of school for the 2023, 2024 school year for uh, the last day of students being June 25th for all students and 24th for grades six and nine. That is inclusive of five snow days. The last possible day. Thank you. No, I would, so, yeah. So then I would like to make the motion to set the 2023, 20, the last possible day for the 2023, 2024 uh, school year as June 25th, which includes five snow days and June 24th for the grade, for grades six and nine, also inclusive of five snow days.
Michael seconds. Any discussion, questions? Having none? We'll take the vote. All in favor? That's eight zero. All right. So that now moves us to our last two discussion items with um, Mr. Levitan. Is he here or do we have?
Where, where is he?
Hi, um, good evening. My name is Kimberly Castoro. I'm the finance manager here at Greenwich Public Schools. I'll briefly talk about the financial report for January month end. The report is a snapshot of about 60% through the year. As for our operating expenditures, we're right in line with prior year spending and overall in a good spot. Um, my team has been communicating with department heads, principals and program coordinators to ensure any negative balances are resolved and really want to thank everyone for all their hard work with that. Um, this method will continue to allow us to avoid a district-wide freeze. Um, additionally, the SESS interim appropriation approved by the RTM in December for 2.2 million is reflected in the expenditure report, which is on page six. Um, that's all I have, but I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a question for Blaze. No, I'm just kidding.
Hey, how's it going?
Why?
Uh, thank you, Kim. Uh, and sorry I'm not there. Kim's covering for me as I'm on baby watch right now, but um, it really is a bittersweet uh, thing for me. I'm, I'm gonna miss working with a lot of you and, and I really appreciate everything. So.
Ben, don't go.
I I got some friendly considerations here. Yeah, no, thank you very much. And uh, it really is, is a shock to me too. And it's been a lot to process over the last uh, sudden, just a couple of days here. Um, but really love Greenwich and we're gonna have a productive two months still. Cody, so let's keep moving and uh, just, uh, just, it's really been an honor. And uh, we got a great team though. And uh, Dr. Jones is, we, we're, we're really heading in the right direction. Dr. Jones has really helped uh, shape us with what we're doing in finance and um, the ball's really rolling uh, in a really good direction. So I just thank you to everybody.
If we could build it into the budget to get you a car service back and forth from Greenwich every day, I'm sure we could figure that out.
Thank you very much.
You know, black town car is kind of nice these days.
Karen's a good babysitter.
I'm not that scared for the BET.
It, it won't. I didn't have any questions. Did anyone else? Great. Kim, thank you for the report. I appreciate it. Um, but both of you stay on task right now because you have one more, which is budget transfers. So Blaze, are you going to turn that over to Kim as well, since you're leaving us?
Kim, can take, just take the first stab here.
Uh, yeah, so these are informational budget transfers as of January month end. Each transfer is within the same major object code. That's the second digit of the object code. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions there are on this.
Could we make it bigger next time? I mean.
Absolutely.
Thank you for pointing that out. I didn't have any questions. Did anyone else? Okay, great. Thank you, guys. Kim, nice job. Appreciate it. I'm not thanking Blaze anymore. Oh, wait, we have tuition rates. No, that's going to, as an action item, but that's going to Kim. We don't. Blaze, you're done. Um, all right, now we're gonna move to our action item, which are tuition rates. Kim, you're up. Sorry, hold on, we have to make a motion. I forgot about that. Um.
Kathleen, do you want to make?
Sure. Do you want to make it? Sure. Make a motion to approve fiscal year 25 tuition rates as presented.
I'll second. Okay, Kim, now you're up.
Okay, Kim, you're gonna be stuck with me speaking for the moment. Um, so the tuition rates here, you'll recall that we have been discussing them for a while. We actually had a first read. Um, we didn't end up voting because the board wanted to, you know, we want to do a full overhaul of the fees with all the work the budget committee was doing with our budget this year. We haven't had a chance to really do it a total overhaul. We've done some restructuring on the most confusing areas. And um, what we're trying to do uh, with the tuition rates is basically the board had kind of said they should be more in line with the budget increase. Um, what you'll see in the K-12, what we had talked about, this is the employee tuition rate, was that it should be aligned, the base should be aligned with what our per pupil cost is that we report to the state. So we've done that here, and then employees pay 15% or 25% of that. And then um, we did a 5% increase, uh, which is more in line with the budget increase on uh, pre-K and summer school. Um, this would, you know, basically the, the discussion at the uh, budget committee level and at our last meeting, um, you know, way back in the fall was let's make sure that we're keeping up with the cost of running the programs at least with growing labor rates and contract labor and inflationary pressures. We've been uh, about 2% to 3% on tuition for a long time. Um, and so this, this would kind of be a, a rightsizing of that. I still think the whole program warrants a little bit of an overhaul um, when we do both tuition and fees, but it's important that we vote uh, at some point on some tuition now because both pre-K is basically waiting for the fee at this moment, at this point. Um, and so is the employee tuition program. So Kim and I are happy to take any questions, but uh, that's, that's why this is looking the way it is. While you're discussing too, I would add that if we, if we do increase the fees, I think correspondingly, uh, we would then uh, suggest an increase in the revenue in the operating budget uh, that would correspond here on, on both of these lines as well, which the BET can still make that adjustment for the fiscal year 25 budget.
Cody?
Yeah, this is on our to-do list for, uh, to do a deeper dive on these for, um, in the budget committee. But um, so I, I view this as like kind of a, like a basic done controversial or sophisticated move, and then we'll come back with more controversial ideas later on.
And rental rates? When you come back, perfect.
Yeah, yeah, those two.
Rental rates really need, need a good, I mean, we need to update them because of the labor contract. We're behind with, but to Cody's point, they really could use a good overhaul at the, you know, it's been, I think, since 2000, maybe 18. Um, and it's missing a couple of facilities right now.
Any questions? Good? All right, uh, all in favor? Raise your hands. All right, that's eight.
Eight zero.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Keep us updated on baby watch.
Will do. Thanks very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you both. All right, um, so that brings us down to agenda planning. Say it again?
I know, Mike, Mike was, had a suggestion on that.
Mike, you have a suggestion?
Well, only that the, um, I think I wanted to see if everybody felt like uh, hanging out on March 7th uh, for the OG. It sounds like we're gonna have to talk about OG and the calendar. And we don't want to have the calendar conversation go too far into March, given people, people need to, probably need time to organize childcare.
Yeah, so how is everybody looking for March 7th? I take it, that's a Thursday. Yep, and we'll just do March 7th at seven. Please.
Um, I may or may not be able to get back in time, so I just want to make sure that you know that, but um, I'm at a FOI hearing in Hartford and it doesn't start until, I believe it's going to be like three o'clock.
Ooh, yeah, you're not making it back in time.
Well, if this is the only agenda item, right?
Well, there'll be two agenda items, the Old Greenwich Ed specs and the calendar date for April 2nd.
Right.
Yeah, we could make it a virtual meeting. Mike, could we make it a virtual meeting? Okay, so why don't we plan to?
Why would you do that?
Yeah, let's do that so that we can avoid um, the setup here, um, and taking time out of people's days. Uh, so let's do March 7th, 7:00 PM, virtual meeting. Okay, so that deals with that issue. Do we have anything else to add for our, go for it, sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say on March 21st for the meeting, I wanted to add uh, St. Rock's request to use the Hamilton Avenue Fields. They should be uh, ready to go with all their documentation, everything that, on that day.
We haven't had a good fiery issue in a while. That'll be fun.
I don't know, they, they have everything lined up, so I don't, I hope it, I don't believe it should be a fiery issue.
I don't think.
Fire and brimstone.
Um, Dr. Jones, did you have anything else to add? For the March 21 meeting or any other comments?
No, thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Calling once, calling twice. Okay. Um, would someone like to make a I think it's Sophie's turn to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Karen, seconds. Uh, all in favor? Vote. Okay, that's eight zero. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time tonight.